Well, that's when he was in trouble.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we need an order. We have a forum. Take a motion to approve the agenda in the minutes. One second, I'll second it. Okay, right.
Morning, Rich.
Morning.
Um, not much discussed today. I've been doing some maintenance and we damaged the garden this winter. They were trying to fix that last week. Got rid of a beaver dam. Uh, you read them or bridges and. Five six five, it was like. Three or four damn block of water up. The inspectors could get underneath the bridge to the spec. I'll take care of it Friday. What I have today, the final pay voucher for the. It's the very, very fairly good. With the Mediterranean instruction, that voucher is going to be the final. Voucher for the retainage of six thousand three hundred twenty-two dollars roughly. Total product was two hundred seventeen thousand sixty dollars. Twenty seven cents, but just need to get that, that what happened was when uh. The DOT had some turnover in their office and they'd submitted everything and I had to think this one kind of got. Left in the dust kind of by accident, so you see you kind of get it closed out.
Which rid of this one?
Oh, we did, we had uh. Was it? Want to say it was. Nah. We did some repair. There was a big joint down the middle. Get some approach work and some piling. It's not like elk creek.
Yeah. I don't know which one you're talking about.
I can't remember days either. But we had, so it was just a smaller pair of jobs.
All right, is there more to approve the uh? Project voucher final paid?
I'll make it one more thing. No, sorry, come on.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all favor act by I suppose?
Yeah. I'm hoping later this week I'll probably give you a guess. More bridge work for these smaller ones that we need to get done and then hopefully I'll try to make some contact with um architects to correct the checks. And keep moving forward.
Yeah, things good. I'll go for it this morning. Yeah. We use Indian grid.
So you didn't mention beaver dams?
Yeah.
So I do by the four.
I see there's another one there.
You're gonna build a little dam again. I don't know if we tore that out before somebody else did. I saw the sticks there a week ago and it's like, okay, little buggers are coming back.
I was driving there Friday night.
Yeah.
Cause they made a way or not in the right way and I'm like, yeah, there we go again, so.
I just don't feel sorry.
Yeah, I, I. Sometimes I should just keep my eyes on the road so I can see half the stuff I did, but yeah, I saw it there.
Good. And that's what I, I'd say, I don't know whose responsibility that one is. I don't even know, it's like, you know, bitch or the tiger looking at it.
Yeah, I'm not, I.
Yeah, right by the quarry just installed.
Yeah, right where, right where they, right where the, they, they meet together where it dumps in.
Yeah, I think that's part of the crack, isn't it?
It's not part of the.
Not part of the. No, I didn't think it was in the county right away or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's gotta be right on the edge of it.
Yeah, I think it's in their best beaver destroyer, beaver dam destroyer route. They can pull them out, thinking there's had their hip wickers and that and the chainsaw to cut through all of that. But I'm getting a piece of equipment out there because it was so much, it would, the water was backed up.
Yep.
So everything was just going to be soft. So we went out there, they got. Chainsaws and started throwing stuff by hand.
My.
Had a good job.
Good.
Lucky. All right, any else?
No, no.
Yeah, thank you, Chris.
Yep.
Uh, drainage. Well, I think we've been, we didn't have any claims, did we?
No.
No, you know.
I've got three, I typed up minutes for the.
That's the last.
Yeah, and then the meeting we had, I know everyone just typed them up, put in the book if you want. Sign those.
Then, um, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes for the fourteen thirty-four. Yeah, the fourteen thirty-four, so.
Second, I'll second it.
Discussion. One favor I.
Right.
All right, propose. Right, we'll go approve. Now, I think we can go to the fourteen project then approval Jacob.
All right, the DD fourteen. Uh, Ronus Brothers was a little bitter. Their man fall checked out. They had a low base bid of five hundred eighty-five, eighty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars fifty cent. Um, at that land. Several landowners attended. And then we did talk to Dolby and Anderson afterwards as well on the phone call. Um, talking to Dolby, there was some discussion about ending lateral four of his fence line between him and Wilkins. After talking to him on the phone. Couple times, when he called me this morning. He's wanting to extend it all the way through his property and just do all lateral four. Bring it up to Gordon's fence line. That way he doesn't have to deal with it. He won't connect on and do it. That brings us, there was. Upper main, everyone seemed to want to do that. We talked to Randy Johnson. He wanted to go all the way up to his property line. Uh, lateral four then would be completely. Built as well and the lateral five was the one that went to the corner with, with Dolby and Anderson's property that. That was, there was interest in that one as well. That means the total bid. If we do the thirty-six plus lateral four, lateral five and the upper main, the total bid would be nine hundred twenty-six thousand. Eight dollars and fifty cents. That is not the capital, if they go, you guys only go up to forty-eight inch. That would be thirty. That was, and the forty-eight, when Dol, talked to Dolby and Anderson, Johnson both, either one were asking the forty-eight. They. Then Anderson said at the hearing, Wilkins is really the only one, but. The only advantage I see to it is. If that twenty, when that twenty-four inch fails, which is fifty years old, it's pretty young for a tile. Yeah, when that fails, there will be the forty-eight we can use and get it to ban that forty-eight, but that may be fifty years down the road. To spend the money now. But when seventy-six is what we're recommending.
Instead of twenty-four is an old clay or is it cement or?
Who's good in seventy-six, so it's probably cement, but it's.
Probably good.
It's gonna be.
Sure, probably.
And.
Good depth too, don't it?
And we're taking so much pressure off of it. I mean, right now it's trying to put. So much water through when we take off, when we put the new thirty-six and all that, or leave the pressure at least a lot less. Thirty-six is the one I recommend, you know. In a size standpoint.
Um. Yeah, that surprisingly, that forty-eight or that. Twenty-four inch in the ditch, that'll, that seventy-six file, whatever, that's running right now. There's not much time. Excuse my. Anywhere, that one's still taking on water.
I still, I got some, oh my god.
For some reason, like, well.
I'm gonna just.
They're just odd, yeah.
So, um.
Cause I, and I know the bulk of the. The upgraded forty-eight is going to be on Wilkins, right?
The Wilkins will play the bulk of it. We haven't done the reclass yet, but the way the factory used to work out is Wil, Wilkins will pay the bulk of it. Dolby will still pay. Decent amount because he is just right there, you know, it's only. Five hundred, six hundred feet away from his property line.
Right.
Anderson and Johnson and the other hand on their door and will pay. Very small amount for that forty-eight upside. The forty-eight, if we upside it, it would be an additional two hundred thousand dollars. Do about one point one. The railroad crossing is already proposed in forty-eight. We'll do that as a forty-eight. Even if it's a thirty-six, oh, that way, if there ever is any.
Do it now, cause you get the permits, you get the, the, everybody there.
Yeah, if we wouldn't done the permits for thirty-six and then had to come back and came to forty-eight, it would have been a bit long. You have to.
Start over.
You do go through the whole process again, so you might as well. Correct, put the forty-eight in under the railroad tracks.
And there's never any question.
Future.
I don't know, I. I just wonder. I get the thirty-six and I am a hundred percent behind that, but I wondered forty-eight should be the, the answer just because. We've already been, there's been a discussion on possible lawsuits. And what's that going to be if we end up in court? And I guess what? It all goes back to a district. There's only two people that went in court. And that's the attorneys.
Hmm.
So. I mean, that, that's my thought. I honestly think it's, it's there. The bulk of it's going on Wilkins. I would say go with forty-eight and be done with it just for the fact of.
So could they still follow for a month or seven if we? No. We're already back to play the robots. Because I mean, that wasn't. Really that was proposed after. Your suggestion is the thirty-six, Mike, for one request.
Mike, forty-eight.
You know, that's just.
Yeah.
From a loss, you can maybe have a loss both ways.
Hmm.
The landlord should say, well, that would have been the original proposal. We never got a chance to follow the monstrosity.
Hmm.
Yeah, they didn't. It's not a thousand acres in the district. Wilkins always probably three hundred of it.
Yep. So I don't know if there's a big chance.
Yeah.
And I don't think they want to kill us.
Project.
Johnson, Anderson, Dolby, all, all. We tried our lot, objective for project. I don't think it would still be. Cause you, you still there landowners, unless everybody jumped on board. Forty-eight, I mean, we haven't done the reclassing. So. Exact break down how much of we, we welcome for Dolby or everybody else. It'll be skewed pretty heavily.
And I'm not sure.
Be the one who would be either. He never requested that upfront either. He never, you know.
He wanted that way away, he should have said that.
Hmm.
Yeah. I, yeah, I don't know.
It's.
Thirty-six. Forty-eight, it'll be good, but probably. I know there's discussion about the drainage coefficient. I don't see the drainage coefficient changing. Been placed for seventy years, even. With. We were, you know, climate change, you know. I. About a tiling going in, I don't think. The demand will necessarily, and the more pattern tile you have, the less need you need for a big tile, right? It's taking all those small flows. So it's, it's operating more efficiently for longer periods. You're taking out your peak flows for having more pattern tiles. So the more pattern tile you get put in, there are less of a need for a larger tile.
Um, really, I mean, everything I could see, the condition different, or would be like surface and take surface water, you're trying to avoid pondings. You want to get rid of it a little faster, so. A little bigger, a little more grade or whatever, but.
Yeah, and then regula- regulations is probably the biggest reason you want to do the forty-eight. Well, there come a time where they'll. Let us put new tile in. You know, not again, I don't know, Chris Walt.
Right, right.
I don't think there's really a right or wrong answer from a.
Yeah.
Standpoint of the forty-eight versus the thirty-six. You got a good price for the forty-eight. You got a good contractor. You know, you, you bet it again, you may not get wrongness with a good bid.
Well, and so it came in. Hundred thou. Hundred thousand under a year?
The forty-eight came in. Seventy-three percent of what we had estimated that. Twenty-five percent, like we estimated about. About a half a million that came in them. Four hundred. Or, yeah, so the eight percent.
So in all honesty, they're getting forty-eight for an estimated thirty-six.
Well.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm literally. Tippy toeing on it, guys. I don't know what's. The right and wrong. Really, I'm down the middle of the stream on it. If you want to go forty-eight, I'll go forty-eight. Even if it's gonna be thirty-six, I'll go thirty-six.
Figure is always better, you, but you know, it's still, it's, it's not. Yeah, still, it's still significant money that, um, you know, if the rest of them are against it, I'm not sure.
Yeah, everybody against except for one guy and that guy is, is paying the majority of the bill. On the forty-eight, going on the forty-eight, so.
He could probably take. Take the difference he's paying and put his own sub main in himself.
That's, I mean. If I were him, I'd rather spend like a pattern tightly, that you're saying, but.
And tie it into that. Twenty-four inch.
So twenty-four, run another one up or whatever, so. Probably not. I mean, he's still gonna pay into thirty-six still.
You know, tie in the boat.
Yeah, I mean, forty-eight isn't gonna help you if you don't put five.
Right, none of it is.
He's gonna have to. If we're eight feet deep with concrete, right?
But we are getting the forty-eight for the original estimate of what it was going to cost to do the thirty-six.
Um, no.
You guys estimated for the thirty-six.
We estimated the thirty-six at. Three hundred and seven thousand, it came at two hundred and seventy-five. So now that one wasn't significantly cheaper. It'll still be a hundred thousand dollars more than what we estimated to go with it. The forty-eight. With a hundred thousand, a lot of a thousand acres. You're a maker.
Well, anyone want to throw a motion out?
I'm gonna put a motion out, I'll just leave it with a thirty-six inch, that's with a original proposal.
Yeah, there's a second.
I will second that.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Any other questions for Jacob on?
Thirty-four, the bids came back the same, wrongness was still a little better, right, I could get the math as well.
All right, we'll call for vote on us. Definitely thirty, or fourteen bid, all in favor I?
All right.
I propose. All right, motion carry Jacob. Stay with the original plan, I guess.
Right. It should be the girl. My favorite lane.
Well, just like I said. Railroad crossing and. That already being. Bigger, I guess, the next generation, fifty years down the road can do that.
Yeah, in fifty years when that twenty-four and it feels bad.
Uh, they could probably just replace that.
Maybe just replace that.
From there to there and tie in whatever's into it.
Yeah.
So. It's all right, uh, hold on.
Hold on.
We got more for you.
Yeah. Yeah, DD thirty-four.
DD thirty-four.
Just fourteen.
Yeah, DD thirty-four, we check the math and low bidder was still wrongness. At a total bid of six hundred eighty thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars.
Yeah. And that came in quite a bit cheaper too than your.
Yeah, we had estimated eight hundred thousand.
Okay.
A hundred point. Could probably find that one. No controversies. No, everybody prepares.
Yeah, that, that group was all in favor of repairing that section and coming in cheaper than they thought. That's good for them, so.
Should be.
All right, take a motion to approve DD thirty-four bid for, uh, Ronus Brothers.
I'll make that a motion.
Nice. All right, any other discussion? All favor I?
I.
I propose. Motion carries. Uh, commissioners for DD fourteen, twenty-six, forty-six and forty-eight reclassification.
We're getting close to wrapping all the reclasses up. Um. So we would like a commissioners, fourteen, I know, we typically don't do reclasses until after the product's done, however. It's eight percent, it is set at eight percent interest. We have a pretty good idea of what it's going to be. We might as well, we get that assessed this year, that could be a. Savings to the landowners, but I did ask to bump that one up as well. We'll just have them all at the same time.
Makes sense, that's why we're, we'll be sitting on it like it's a three-year, well, that's when it gets reclassified, so.
Yeah, and even then it can break it out over two years, but they have. Like a seventy-five percent or so of that's a bit here and then. You know, obviously tax event, people would do that.
Um, good, so we have commissioners then, did we find, you know, I saw some emailing back and forth.
Yeah, Merlin Bart's and Mike Stevens.
Okay, that's covered everything we need.
Yep.
Okay, so there are mostly current appoint Merlyn Bart's and Mike Stevens as commissioners for those three classifications. Okay, for a second, I'll sign it. All right, any other discussion? All favor I?
All right.
I propose. I think we got everything, Jacob, right? Thank you for your help with all this.
Thanks.
Val, any else from you?
I think that is, yeah.
All right. Uh, no claims, a secret or their payroll. I'll send you a comment. There's. There's motion to prove payroll in a second. All favor I?
All right.
I propose. Uh, any reports?
Nope.
Their eligibility or salary changes? Nope. Right, so look at like. Annual maneuver management plan, I guess, do you see that?
Yeah.
Say, like, the motion to acknowledge the annual maneuver management plan?
I will miss.
All right. Any other discussion? All favor I?
Bye.
I propose. Uh, motion carries. Uh, hay ground discussion. I was gonna post by Mike Stevens, so. Take hay off that. Eight acres we just bought from them, um, top of fridge, they don't. Not sure what we're gonna be doing there, so. I mean, that's.
We're probably gonna. Start, maybe give an inventory of pipe. And we're in orders in pipe here this spring, start having an inventory instead of making a trip to Albert Lee once we need to, you know. And we'll find a spot where it isn't in the way for. Hey, it's like I take a bunch of ground anyway, and I don't know whether we keep it out there yet or if we're still stockpiling on our own ground. I, I don't know if we're gonna have any trouble with people taking stuff, but maybe it's better if we just kind of keep it. We may or may not stockpile.
Correct. Okay. I mean, I don't, but. We see this going much more than a year, or are we gonna start, and start gathering up real estate after that?
Well, we're already going to be borrowing money, so it needs to get going and.
Right, that's why. It's that I, it's right, you know, instead of putting it out for bid, I think for three years, that's, we're not gonna, we're gonna have that property for up by then. I mean, I think we go a year at a time on this.
Yeah, I would say so.
You know, because eventually it's gonna get down to just a middle school of acres and is it worth even doing that, right? For what you're getting off it, so. Um.
How do you decide the amount?
Yeah, that's the question again. I don't know. What Iowa State say, that's what everybody goes by, isn't it? I don't know. Oh.
And I sent you the one that we have with Brian. It's a hundred dollars an acre.
Yeah. And I think we did that basically, because we needed somebody to take care of it. I mean, it could probably charge more, ask for more. And I mean, we let, um, cut out, you know, just to get it cut, we would. Running around cutting that too, you know, so.
Right, and it's more of a. Somebody else cuts it and keeps the weeds and comes out of it when we're.
Yeah, obviously rents a lot higher than. That, but.
Hmm.
Is this good hay ground or is it like casino weeds? No, it's.
He's been taking it for.
Mike said it.
Yeah, it's, it's good.
Good, it's good ground. Yeah, so.
Um. Yeah, I guess we'll start bringing up with a number. I don't. I don't know what. But seems fair, like I said, it's probably just a year. Um.
Yeah, I mean, as long as you realize we did some notes start up, you know. I mean, granted, if we start tearing it up, we're gonna take those acres off.
Right, that's the thing, where do we? You know, we set it at approximately eight acres, well. What happens if we also take four of it here? In August. So. We're looking at, even if it's a hundred dollar an acre, eight hu- eight hundred bucks total, if we take some in between now and then. Are we gonna have to refund back or do we just, you know? Meet somewhere in the middle and. It is what it is for a year.
It's the acres.
Yeah. Seven point nine something.
Yeah, I don't know what hay ground grants.
Jim would know that.
Much more like that.
Jim would know that.
Yeah, probably actually much more.
They have a.
Prop ground, because you're taking quite a bit of dollars out there. For the acres.
How many crops does usually get off of it? Like last year probably didn't, that's pretty light. I think it was two.
Depends on the year.
Yeah, well.
It just depends on the year.
That, yeah, should we look and see what? Maybe ask Jim and then s- see what other, cause he's got other hay out there too, right?
He's got ads out there right now.
Does he?
Yeah, it's in the paper.
Hmm. They've got some.
Yeah, let's just talk with Jim and then.
Maybe you can do something by cutting, something like that, or maybe the, yeah, then if we take it.
Right. Yeah, true.
Cause I mean. You know, we're raining, it really isn't gonna be a non-factor, then it's gonna be pretty wet.
Yeah, basically just in the both that.
It gets no crops and still has to maybe cut the weeds.
We never get rain. Let's do that, let's just look at it a little more and try again next week.
I mean, absolutely. That would be.
Right, right. Just maybe it's gonna be one year.
Yep, I don't think we need to. Bid, if those three years or so or more, then we definitely want to do that, but.
All right, uh, water system improvement. I haven't heard Jason on the. DNR stuff yet, so I'll reach out to him this week. A couple of questions for him anyways. Uh, I wonder if that, oh, we're gonna skip till after our. Post session. Uh, EMS. Any discussion, anything? I know they've got all the. Uh. Yeah, the different collector. Uh, they're going through all the numbers now to make sure they've got everything in order, so.
Good.
Um. I know. The ones they did have done already were plenty good. As far as evaluations, as far as signatures, they've been, like, everybody's been like seventy percent or better range. So it's been pretty good that way, so. But we'll see, we'll know more here. Next couple of weeks. Um, Randy on Zoom. See him in the room?
Oh. Oh.
Okay.
Which side can send the numbers? Didn't do no more. It isn't on your list, is it?
I'm. Eight, four, five, twenty-two hundred.
That come from?
I don't know. First I seen it.
I don't mean.
Thank you.
Three, four, five, twenty-two hundred. Thank you.
What to do about that?
All right, uh, health insurance incentive. After our latest budget, I think we're, where we're gonna be, aren't we? We start this year at fifty bucks to participate. And then another fifty if we hit the full five percent.
Yeah, let's do, start at some place.
Start there, see how it goes.
So drop it down?
Yeah. Uh. Would you have it in? Well.
I had a hundred bucks and.
But that, if, if we don't use it, that'll just continue the fund or.
But you don't wanna. If, if you're not planning on using it, it's probably not a good thing to leave in there. Cause that adds up with all, all the people participating. Uh, I mean, it's up to you guys.
That goes into, then that. Remainer goes into our self, our partial self-fund, doesn't it? Is that how we're? That.
You were doing the two and a half percent.
Yeah, right, but we're taking it out of that fund that we're.
But then are you doing the hundred dollars like you were talking before or did you?
Hundred dollars. Yeah, fifty and fifty. Would be a hundred, oh, okay.
We were talking.
You were talking two hundred.
And then coming back with another hundred, what we were talking before.
I thought it was two hundred after January one.
Okay, but it's not. We're, we're levying for that, we're not, that's not coming out of our fund.
You're loving for the. Well, it's all technically coming out of the fund.
I mean, the.
But it's going, the, the two point five percent is going to the fund because we're paying it.
Yeah, cause we want to, we want to see that get built.
Yeah. Yeah.
And once they get to a certain point, then we were eventually gonna use that to try to buy down family of pot format, once we hit that.
But then that hundred bucks was gonna um, be after January one, you were talking about. Giving everybody that participated this year, that two hundred dollar incentive.
Yeah.
But I don't know if you guys totally decided.
What fund is it from?
Well, yeah, I guess.
General supplemental.
Yeah, right, because that's where the insurance is at. Okay, I was under the impression, and that's.
And we're increasing that by sixty-five cents, so if you drop that, I would probably drop. Sixty-five cents possibly.
Well, we can't do that, cause we're already on the paper enough, we decided our levy, right?
Not, not yet, but. Darn close.
I thought we were gonna use. Some of that from the self-fund, and that's, I I understood that wrong.
We're just one, depending on how much we stick in, we just wouldn't put as much in the self-fund as if you were thinking.
Yeah, but that's, that's just how I got it in my head, so.
Well, the two hundred or the two point five percent is basically fifty bucks more that's going. Or no, I guess it's technically like thirty or forty bucks more that's going in.
Probably.
Yeah. Yeah. I'd have to look at his chart again. It's just, if you want numbers to change, I need to know now.
Right, right.
Cause I just, I already have the changes from the two. Departments and then I I don't know where we're gonna end up on the sheriff's department. So.
This is gonna get split into two payments.
Right.
Hundred and a hundred. We're either doing a hundred, a hundred, or fifty and fifty.
When did that start? Cause your number was two hundred, I thought.
Yeah, and I just throw a number out there, but I was, I was thinking that by adding more. To our partial self-fund, we would use some of that additional we're putting in there, but like, we're not, so I I.
Oh, I guess I understood it wrong, because I was just shooting for that two and a half percent, and then I was putting a hundred bucks on top of that, so we had two hundred by January one. It's up to you guys.
We won't affect that amount that we're sticking into that. That we're trying to build that onward, and build it's not gonna put that all the way you got.
No.
Okay, so I guess. We'll stick with a hundred and a hundred. But that's what we had.
But what, what's the hundred and a hundred? I I don't understand that part.
Do participate, we we should pay the people that participate something, and then if we hit the.
Oh.
Five, full five percent, then it's extra. Right, that's what we were.
That's why.
Because.
I guess that's the part I missed.
Yeah, we can't. Participate and just.
Yeah.
But if we get more to participate, they're gonna get paid as well, and if we hit the five percent, we get.
You hit some for participating, just doing it. And then if we hit that five, you get another hundred.
That's the part I hadn't heard yet, so.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Because then, then this way, if it hits, yeah, then we're.
So then.
And you'll know all that before January one anyway.
Exactly.
And you got it in there that way now, so you wouldn't have changed nothing.
Yes.
Okay. So you wanna make me a motion on that?
I'll make a motion on that.
Hundred dollars incentive to participate, and if we hit the five, or the full participation, and get our five percent discount.
Another hundred.
Okay. So, you second that?
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, I? I opposed? All right, now there's an incentive gonna be out there, so.
Yeah.
Department heads. Employees.
We're gonna.
Talk to each other. We're trying to help, we do so much. Okay, line energy's rate increase. Wait, do you hear back from Jeff on that? I see it went to him.
All right, it was just at the end of last.
One more week on that, then, let's make sure he's. Yeah, he has both of them. Uh, people service, nothing new right now? Hey, any budget update discussion? We all pay.
I think we just kinda summarized it.
A little bit there.
Cause yeah, I'm just hanging, waiting, I I can plug everything in one more time, cause I got the two budgets that. You guys um, talk to the departments and then.
And his, and you've got his.
Yeah, so I'm just waiting to see if I can change anything with sheriffs before, cause right now I have a minute seven. That was the last where we landed at at the end, so I I don't know what to do with that. But I guess anything, if it's any less, it's just better on the bottom line.
Yeah, I don't see. Think we've got it.
But I'll work that out and get it to you and. Tell you where the balances end up, and hopefully I can get that done this weekend.
Okay. Just take a peek at it, everything after we get it all.
Yeah, I read that one. Did you get a copy of that?
Who's?
You said Jesse. I just wanted to, Jesse had sent you the revive.
Okay, yeah.
It pretty much happened the way I figured it would.
Yeah. Any else on that? Are you moving? Uh, Department Head Discussion.
I can give you the update of the jail stuff, um. Our twenty eighty. Group met last week, um, we have started to open up negotiations with Cerro Gordo County. We got a meeting with them at nine A M on Thursday to have our first meeting with them. Um, the other thing is, uh, we do have a meeting after mediation with Renee on talking through some of the. Human resource issues with moving forward, and I have a meeting at ten o'clock this morning with my staff to start moving forward on some other things.
And we're meeting Thursday.
Down.
Down there.
Yep. All right, and they did put a supervisor in their Jalen men on their board down there, so, yeah, we got four going down, they'll have three.
Good. Sound good. And then Department Heads?
We'll be, uh, you know, I think we've got R C retiring here, this month. We're probably gonna be moving another employee to that position. I may move off on hiring until, I know we need to talk about hiring if you're doing anything, but. I'm probably. Maybe just sit at the end of spring here. Kinda see where we're setting with everything.
Yeah, um, I did send that mail out with my gallery, Rich has given vacations.
Okay.
His budgets is a little bit different, so we can kinda work one on one with him. I guess, after he gets back.
Yep.
I'll have that discussion, uh, cause those funds are. Protected basically.
Yeah, there's not a whole lot of.
Yep.
Give and take, it's more managing than I get.
Yep. But no, we will fill you, we'll fill you in and we'll. Have that discussion after you get back then.
But I'm gonna say. Take kind of a. An inventory of what we have, people, and where we, where we might need to see things before we start.
Appreciate.
We're always taking applications in any way, we're always getting them, we kind of have an open. Open application thing, and maybe we find somebody that really. Knows us a little bit, but for now, I think we're gonna move things over and then we'll see where we set. Okay, kind of, kind of get a reorganization maybe. But we are, we are thin, there was an email out. Two weeks ago, which means other counties are facing this too, where order to tell them to cut people and. One day it says, well, how many people are running with nineteen and we are less than that, so I mean.
You know, and it's depends what, you know, what what's your counting offer? What are your road department, do you got your own bridge crew, do you know, how many people do you need?
The rule of thumb has always been. Have as many people as you have, snow routes. Well. Then we should take more people, but we make it work with part-time people, and it does help with the budget, right?
Well, look at the state.
Right.
It brings up so many part-time as they do full-time.
Yep, and they pull people from that are doing. Like inspections and stuff in the summertime, they'll pull them out and run trucks too, I mean, everybody's short staffed, so we're trying to make things work. We'll keep that up, I think we just gotta need to. We'll sit down with, uh. Once we get out of spring, or you know, we get the spring here, we'll reevaluate where we're at.
Yeah. Sounds good. Anybody else?
Um, talking with Kel-Tec about uh, getting some new computers for the vehicles, we have to get at least one, cause we've got a transfer vehicle that we're gonna need. Your stuff, then all of ours are getting a bit long and too, and so. Uh, getting some numbers on that, so we might be looking at getting that done here. For. The end of this year.
For all. Lot potentially, depending, but. Are they, are we all a computer now, same age, same era?
Yeah, they are.
How many does it involve? I know you talked to me about two different numbers.
Fourteen computers, uh, sixteen vehicles, so. We'd need fourteen computers, but we need through the radio and the mount and everything, we'd need sixteen of those, because. You know, they'll put their computer in a different vehicle and go. So there's more vehicles and computers.
Actually, for me, it'll be fifteen computers with the addition of the adding.
I thought we counted that in there, we didn't?
No. Cause right now we're thirteen, plus one more, fourteen, plus the transport.
Oh.
You're short of deputy or anything?
You're short of deputy.
And we're gonna add one more, yeah. The one we're short, we got already.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I missed, I missed, I thought the adding one was the new vehicle, so I was at fourteen, so we needed fifteen, okay. Are we at seventeen mouth then? Or sixteen mouths? Cause we were, I was at fourteen and sixteen.
Seventeen.
Fifteen and seventeen.
Yeah, my question is, I don't know, let's see what pricing does, I guess, but that's something maybe we should kinda look at. Spreading out. Do, yeah, take it, take a year-by-year budget instead of buying somebody one time, can we spread it like two or three times that? We're all passing rotating computers after so many years.
It is nice to have everybody on the same platform, um, because if we rotate the radios. Like, the older radios can't support new cell technology. So we can't use certain SIM cards in the older radios, because they don't have the. Five G or whatever it is, they are four G radio, so. Um, getting everybody to the same platform keeps things a lot simpler, um, but. If budget constraints say, yeah, we can. So, but, um, I.
And I'm guessing you got it here budget this year.
I think, yeah, I think I've got it.
I just, I was just looking at the future of. If we get budgets down to a certain number, these. You know, we can no longer do bulk.
Right.
Everything, can we spread that out over a couple of years, would it, would it be feasible to just?
Well, the nature of of my budget is that, if there's a lot of project things, so every year, there's at least one big project. I mean, this year is looking like this is it, um, next year I have to replace servers. So, you know, that's gonna be a hundred and fifty thousand, so every year there's gonna be. The year after next, you're looking at getting new routers and potentially uh, wireless access points and and switches, so. You know, it's. You could try to spread all that out, so every year you're buying some servers, some switches, some. Laptop. I guess. It, to me, it makes sense more to do it as a whole.
And the only thing I'll add with that is, like with Kel-Tec, the bigger the number you deal with them on, the better price you get. And then they have to send a tech up, you want a tech coming up every year, then solve and, or one time, they come up. Just some other things.
That's, that's the benefit of doing the at scale.
Just asking.
Yep. No, good question, good question.
All right, anybody else? Department Head Wires?
I'll try Randy one more.
Yeah.
Why don't we use your phone instead in case it's. Screening.
Oh, does it still take a number to get out of here?
No, six, four, one.
Whoops. Six, four, one, what's cancelled?
Eight, four, five. Twenty-two hundred.
Number you have dialed has not been recognized. Please try again.
The six, four, one.
You do.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've had six, four, one.
I did.
Yeah.
Hold on a second here. They love, still, you gotta have a one. Here, you run the thing.
That's really weird.
I'm sick and tired of the new phones. Old ones are a lot simpler.
They used.
I'm gonna turn it that way.
They used to work.
Yeah, they used to work.
What was the number? Eight, four, five?
Oh, you put in four, one.
Oh, I did, didn't I?
Yeah, figure that one out, try again. There it took the six.
Eight, four, five?
Yep.
Twenty-three hundred.
Yeah, you do need a one.
I don't.
Never needed one.
Well.
Please do not dial a one. Please do not dial a one.
How about we just throw away, I'll do my cellphone, what is it?
What was six, four, one?
Eight, four, five.
The number you have dialed.
It's too late, too quick.
Eight, four, five, twenty-two hundred.
Technology. Yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
Harry, I can.
Randy, AJ Stone.
Yeah.
You are in our board meeting, you have a request.
Yes.
What's going on?
I need to hire somebody, cause I have nobody, I'm by myself again, so.
Good.
Then Randy, have you decided how you're gonna do it? Is it gonna be set hours, or is it gonna be basically on call? When you need somebody?
Get everybody on call, so I'm gonna go back to uh, like Saturdays and when I'm gone.
So do you know how many hours?
People out there are gonna wanna come in one long call, yeah, the last minute, but.
Right.
Do you know how many hours you're gonna promise them?
Five, three dollars every Saturday.
And then whatever vacation times and that stuff, do you have, I suppose?
When I'm gone, or on vacation, or when I'm still, so.
Yeah. So we'll have to. Kinda get an average of a number throughout the whole year based on this. So. Well, I guess we need help, we need help, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd say, go ahead and. Advertise, whatever.
Yep, okay, well, thanks. Say I need somebody, so.
See if you can get somebody.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Yep, see what's out there.
Yeah, okay, I'll be fine.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, bye.
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 I'll get it next.
There we go.
So the other two, I had to ask, we, they weren't getting benefits. So then will this one get benefits? Pro Rata, part, for Pro Rata, hard, part-time?
Oh, you mean like Iper?
What about, oh, yeah, cause it wouldn't be health insurance.
No, they get Iper, right?
They get Iper anyway, don't get that.
Yeah, it's like vacation. Yeah.
Think about it, you guys.
Depends on the odds. You know.
Cause it didn't make sense with the other two.
No. I mean, if they're gonna be set amount of hours, then that. Even that is. It's just a Saturday person, and.
Yeah.
I'm gonna be gone Wednesday, whatever, you know, I mean.
It's still gonna be on call, you.
Could probably try to schedule somebody and give them a set schedule, I mean. I don't know, good reason.
Right, if you don't mention anybody, it.
Yeah, you can, you know, vacations, but you're just not, you're not sure about sex.
Sex, right, or.
Or family, so.
So.
Well, I'll check with them on that. I I forgot about the leave thing, that's, that's the kicker on that one, cause they wouldn't get health insurance.
No, no.
Okay, uh, Supervisor Weekly, you know.
I didn't have anything.
What? Mark?
Just had the conversation here, one. Right here, with Melissa.
Oh, great.
Yeah, so. Not included. Soon.
So.
Otherwise nothing.
I was over in, uh. Ellisburg. Care Connection on Tuesday. Um. Was like, there's finally a, a bill out there now. For this whole thing and.
Just ask them.
It just, yeah, so. Not good, it's.
But they'll actually to move ahead, is what they're gonna talk about.
They've got a number on it now, they've got, yeah, it's, it's gone through everything, but it's still in the, in the motion of going forward. That's their big push, so. Um. It's just gonna be. It's gonna take any, you know, if they do a region, there's gonna be three elected officials on, it could be a fifteen county region for us. So your local decision-makers are no longer gonna be a part of it, you're, you know, now that you're an advisory committee, so. The odds of our county having representation on that board, when we slim the non, they want to beg over the suit, I mean. So. When mental health is going in the right direction now, I haven't got a feeling it's gonna be one heck of a learning curve and. So.